Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May 17th, Council of New Franklin Nitty Meeting. The time is six o'clock and we have one, two, three, four, we have eleven new readings. Our first one is Resolution Number 23R-41. Mr. Scott.
All right, Streets and Drainage Committee will open at six o'clock. And we got several readings this evening. We're going to start with Resolution 23-R-41, Resolution Authorizing the Hiring of Additional Full-Time Service Department Road Maintenance Worker and Declaring That This Resolution Shall Be Effective Immediately Upon Passage. Is a lot going on and we're ready for a new member, Paul?
Yes, and this is our, it was budgeted for this year. They had an additional full-time road maintenance worker. It is, I think, pertinent that to remember in 2005, when we actually became a city in '06, prior to that, and the service department does a lot of things, but obviously first and foremost are the roads. We have 150 lane miles of roadway and 21 bridges to maintain. And we had, at that time, seven full-time and two part-time in the road department. So you could say it's the equivalent of eight people. When we became a city, we went from 150 lane miles to 250 lane miles. We went from 21 bridges to 32 bridges. And we are now at a total of 10 when you count the supervision. So we went from eight to 10 and you could argue we almost doubled our work. So we know we need to beef up there, it's in the budget. And if you can consider passing this tonight, that would be helpful and we can move on.
This makes 10 or this makes 11?
This will go to 11. Yeah, we'll have eight maintenance, eight full-time, and then we have a, three in the supervisory roles.
That is 2269 per hour, together with all the benefits with all the other New Franklin road maintenance workers. So they'll be taking, once this is passed this evening, start looking at that and putting out the regulations. Right. You have other questions? Does anybody have a problem with waiting the three readings on this to get the process going?
I do.
All right, thank you. Okay, one down. All right, Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Enter Into Agreement with GPD Associates for the Design of the Grill Road Bridge Project and Declaring an Emergency. I'll let the mayor speak to that.
Okay. Speaking right here about that. The Grill Road Bridge, the bridge inspections indicated it needed, it was going to need replaced. It was actually back in 2020 that we made the first application with GPD for funding through the Ohio Bridge Municipal Bridge Program. And if you remember, we were successful with Benner Road. And we were also successful with Grill. We got the word on that. We did the presentation in the end of 2020, November of 2021. They awarded, the cost estimate at the time was $368,610. And they awarded us $303,000, $303,819 towards that project. They left the local share at $64,791. The, and the local share, our intention there is to use permissive funds to cover that aspect of it. So now we're at the point where we've got to do the design work. They've taken another look. They just finished their bridge inspections again here in New Franklin and they're saying, get moving on Grill. GPD put together the cost estimates. They represented us in the application for the grant funding. And so we're recommending that we retain them for the design aspect of it. We had some pretty extensive conversations with them relative to the costs. These costs, there's a, it's suggested to us that anywhere from maybe 12% to 17% of the construction cost is what you would normally see for the design work on a bridge. This, the price that they've presented to us is about 21%. We went into detail with them on that and along the shore, and we checked it from other sources as well. And it pretty much comes down to this. For Benner Road, our design work was $99,000. So it's, as it was explained and then confirmed with another engineering firm, when you get these numbers, there's not a whole lot of difference in workload for $300,000 or $400,000 a bridge, $900,000 a bridge. And they indicated they did the best they could. I'm satisfied that they have the expertise on this clearly. And then they have the know-how, they were involved in step one on this process. So we're recommending that you authorize us to enter that contract with GPD. This is another one that we would like to get going. I'm not saying it's urgent, but they're actually recommending some interim repairs as well. And it's somewhat coincidental that the, we just, we got this proposal from GPD, I don't know about, oh, we got it on May the 3rd. And then the bridge inspections came up in the interim and they're saying sooner rather than later.
So that total cost is $79,661.
Right.
So I've got a question. So it sounds like we got the grant based on a 2020 cost estimate.
Right.
What do we expect the cost to be in 2023 for this?
Yeah, we haven't had an update on it, you understand, and we all will. And I don't really know what the components, this is a much different job, I guess. Mr., Paul, you may be more familiar. I think they're, they're not, it's not as extensive of a project as Benner. So I'm hoping that from the material standpoint, that we're not looking at the steel girders, et cetera, some of the components that drove the cost up on Benner, but we don't have an update on that. I don't know whether or not we can go back for additional funding. We kind of capped out on funding, they'll do 95%, but, or the 308, and that's how we got it then. So, you know, we may be able to go back for some additional if the cost goes up.
Any other questions about this as far as getting this going?
I guess one last, one last question, but I'm assuming GPD will probably revise costs, that's not what I'm saying, service department. And we'll hear that before, I mean, we'll have to do approvals.
Sure. Yeah, that, we'll have to get out. Yeah, we'll do that work out.
Have to just make sure it doesn't go back at $68,000 and over.
Right.
Exactly, we made the decision that that's the drop we're going this time. Thank you. All right, okay, here. We'll go to Resolution Number 24-R-47. A Resolution Authorizing Franklin to Enter Into An Agreement with Toth Buick GMC for Purchase of a 2024 GMC Sierra 3500 Pickup Truck to the Service Department and Declaring an Emergency. This is to update some of our fleet down there in the Service Department. Been some time since we had a newer truck than that, is that in that model? So the cost for this is $57,196, and this has been budgeted for this year.
And the Ohio buys pricing on that was $62,000. When we talk about, the Sourcewell bid price was approximately $63,000. So they were good to us up there at Toth and...
This is a service body one, too, correct?
Yes.
And they're at $57,196, which is not a bad price for a 3500.
Yeah, one ton and third of one.
Yeah. So any questions on that?
Again, we would like to, you know, prices don't, aren't frozen forever, so we'd like to move on this one.
Again, it was budgeted for, and anybody have problems with waiting this one? All right. Thank you. All right. Move to Resolution 23-R-48. A Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Enter Into Agreement with Toth Buick again, our GMC, for the Purchase of a 2024 GMC Sierra 2500 Pickup for the Service Department and Declaring an Emergency. Again, another vehicle that's been budgeted for this year. This one, this is a three-quarter ton, which comes in at $45,955. But again, that's a good price for that vehicle.
Did they beat the state bid on that one? Yeah, and in fact, I had it, actually, the state bid on the 3500 was $76,000.
Oh, yeah, there was a big difference.
Yeah, and then the state bid price on the 2500 is $62,000, I said before. So we substantial marked out.
One of the reasons why on this is because when they're putting out the state bids, they're trying to anticipate what the end of the year's costs are going to be. So they do put some additional cost in there, but then you lock it in. So this is a good way to go, like we, we're actually saving money and we're actually finding the equipment.
And also wanted to say, Mr. Kepler, for taking the initiative to check prices, I believe a lot of communities would just say, well, that's the state bid price. So that might be the best price we can get, just go with it. But he took the initiative to check around and see what's out there and what kind of parts we could get. So saved a lot of money.
And Brian's always been good with all his purchases, either it's on a used vehicle or whatever for the road department, does this on work. And, you know, maybe we can get a good friend with Toth Buick now about some other vehicles in the future, so. Any other questions? Any other problem with waiting the three on this and getting this going? All right. Thank you. All right, we have one more piece of legislation in the Streets and Drainage. A Resolution Awarding a Bid to Carville Companies, Inc. for the City of New Franklin 2023 paving project and declaring an emergency. All right, and we have this Carville in the past. Never, to my knowledge, had any issues with it, with them. Bids came in, we have alternative, the base bid was at $1,057,420. The next bid in was from North Star at $1,083,274. So, as far as that goes. So another, I'll let you speak a little bit.
No, no, that's all right. We, a couple of things that we did recommendation wise. The, the numbers were kind of all over the place relative to Alderman Five, which was the parking lot, no, Alderman One, which was the parking lot. There was a wide discrepancy in those. They went from $94,000 up to $278,000. And so we decided that we would peel that one back out and we're going to rebid that one separately. And we think we actually, we're expecting it to be a lot closer to the lower end than the high end. And by just bidding that one separately, we think we'll also be able to get some of the smaller companies that don't go after the major, the big ones. And the other one, the Alderman Five was Benner Road. We put it in there just to see how, you know, how cost would be. We wanted to keep ourselves right around one and a half million, as we talked before through all the budgets. And that would, and we wanted also to include a contingency, which we did in this. With that in mind, we kind of had one too many projects. The Benner Road was not a difficult one to factor out. Brian had included that one in large part because the bridge has just gone down. But as it relates to the actual condition of the road and the amount of traffic on the road, yeah, we can certainly wait another year on that one. So that's why we filled those two out. And even with all that, then Carville still comes in lower. And that's the recommendation that came from OHM. They did Manchester Road. There were some issues, that was a number of years ago. And we asked about that as well, we did some inquiry whether, you know, how are things now with Carville, and the reports are good. So with that in mind, you know, our group could have won, you know, lowest and best. But they are the lowest and there's no reason to think that they can't do a good job. They got the contract for playing the maximum for the state, so they're state certified as well, so.
So then again, that base bid was that, and then the Alderman One, Two, Three, and Four, and we're leaving out Five, correct?
We're doing Two, Three, and Four.
Okay, Two, Three, and Four, okay. So that now comes out to 1.4, $1,401,864, $1,465. That's still the best bid by about $16,000 over North Star. But then it could went up to over one and a half million on the highest bid.
Yeah, and so the sum of all those is the 1,401,864. And then we added on a 10% contingency, which it amount not to exceed the $1,542. The contract that we'll sign, if this is approved, will be for the $1,401. And they'll have to address us if there's really any, and we'll have the opportunity to evaluate the need for any changeovers that they might present, because it's going to have to be a substantive basis for that, not just that you've approved that additional amount. The base bid includes, and I can give these for it, Bothman Road, Taylor Road, Surface Road, Green Road, and Yager Road. Alderman Two is Limbach Road. Alderman Three is a Johns Road Extension. Alderman Four is a group of roads covered by State Park, State Park Drive, Lynn Drive, Ida Drive, Jan Drive, Dana Drive, and Ormond Drive. And we, it would be good if we could get this one approved tonight.
Again, this has all been the budget for paving for this year. Any other questions?
I've worked with Carville, two pretty large projects in that long term. Pleased with that.
That's a big company, does a lot of, lot of work.
Yeah, we have good experience with them as well. And it's nice to see that we're paving, not chickens either.
Glad to see Yager on there, too, with the building on Yager, it's, yeah, it's a mess.
So if this goes through tonight, Paul, will they give us an idea when we're going to start? Usually they'll, you can get after the school.
Yeah, it'll probably be at least a month. And then Brian's got some crossover work to do, too. So the price will be locked in, but we'll schedule it out. He's got some crossover work he wants to get done before they pay.
I know there was a big likely to pay after the school's out, so it must be...
I'm guessing July.
Any other questions, concerns?
Just glad to see us put this much effort towards roads, I mean, it's a lot over there.
All right, any problem with waiting this tonight, so we can move forward? All right, thank you. Anything else for, anything else for Streets and Drainage this evening? All right, thank you, we'll close Streets and Drainage at 6:15.
Resolution Number 23R-43, Mr. Scott.
A Resolution Authorizing Modifications and to the 2023 Annual Operating Appropriation Budget and Declaring an Emergency. And we're looking at quite a few, four different things. And then we'll add on, I think, Resolution, Resolution, what resolution is it? 45?
45.
What's the way everybody's talking? That's why I don't see it, because I can bring it up. Wait with him just a second, you guys have a coffee, sit down.
Talk among yourselves.
Okay, so Resolution 23R-45, which then is a Resolution Authorizing Return of Funds Advanced by the General Fund to the JAG Grant Fund and Wolf Group Best Grant Fund and Declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately. Want to talk about both of them because they seem to have some similarities within them, so.
Yes, they do. As you can see, the JAG, the JAG Grant Fund and the Wolf Group Best Fund are, were monies that were advanced by the General Fund and now, since we've actually, it doesn't, it shouldn't get done in the same year, but it doesn't always, they return in the advance, because sometimes, especially with the federal monies that come, it doesn't necessarily come in the same year as, as the grant, you know, with, the grant was awarded. So, so we're trying to get that paperwork all squared away and, and return those advances which we have to do by law. The one that is on the other resolution, which is Resolution 43, is the, the, let's see, is the, it advances out, is the fourth one of the four, And that is to, we had not appropriated originally last year any, to make this return of the advance. So that's, we're just adding those appropriations so that we can return that advance in that fund, 2063. So that's, that, and that is how those are connected. We already had, we had appropriated the amount for the Wolf Group Best Fund, so that's not a problem. And then according, as far as the other ones are concerned in 43, Resolution 43, you see the advances out through the general, 1,7905920 advances out $300,000. That goes back to the $300,000 that we needed to transfer to for the seawall, to that project. So it gives us the appropriations in that. The other two are just some adjustments that came after the last, the newest Certificate of Estimated Resources that we got from the county. And they're just some minor adjustments in a couple of areas that we need to make to make sure that we are, that our appropriations are at least no more than the certificate amounts.
Were those two credits?
Those, those are, those are negative numbers, so no. They, the positives are obviously the $300,000. We're decreasing the appropriations in those two. That need more sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Questions, comments? And then we'll ask the wait the three on both of them. All right, moving on, 2344. A Resolution Authorizing Transfer Funds From the General Fund to the Police District Fund and Declaring an Emergency. And this is our standard transfer from the General Fund to the Police District Fund at an amount of $200,000. Questions, comments? Wave three. And, let's see. Resolution 23R-46. A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into An Agreement with Ashiba Business Solutions for the Lease of Copier Equipment for the New Franklin Police Department and Declaring an Emergency. And this is for Copier. 63-month lease at $263 per month.
And this is one we've had.
Yeah, the lease was up and so they were...
They're happy with the service and they did their own shopping to compare purchase versus service and they're convinced that service is a more economical way to proceed, not lease as opposed to purchase.
Yeah. Yeah, the, this, I think, looks out to be about $16,000 over the 63 months approximately. And the equipment cost not $30,000. So it does make sense to, in this case, to just borrow it.
I've been in plenty of situations in my office where we buy them and then you're stuck with them. And we pushed a couple of them to the dumpster because, you know, once they get so old, nobody will take them where the lease is in there.
We normally look the police department, the admin, we buy ours because it's the same people that are always using that machine, so it's easier. But since the police department decided to go with the lease a while back because they have all the officers and different officers always using it, so it was better to have more service connected to that machine rather than own it. Where over here, it's just the same people.
Questions, comments? Let's not wait the three on this, let's do something different.
Do four readings?
Wait, wait the three, okay. And let's see, does that cut me off for tonight?
Yep.
We did that, so, thank you. We'll close the Finance Committee meeting at 6:24.
Thank you. We have a second reading, Resolution Number 23R-48.
And we also have a first.
Very sorry, I'm sorry.
Community Development at 6:05.
Oh, thank you, I missed, I missed you, didn't I? I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay, they're both Community Development, so. This is 23R-50, this is supplemental, so if you open the agenda at one, this wasn't in it. Another vehicle that we need to grab while we can get it. Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Enter Into An Agreement with Toth Buick GMC for the Purchase of a 2022 GMC Canyon Pickup to the Zoning Department and Declaring an Emergency. And this is $37,630. Again, you can get, when you can get stuff, get it right now. We had looked at, this is for the zoning department, it's, we budgeted for it. It doesn't take, you take one drive in the zoning truck, you're going to want to buy another one. It's almost cruel and unusual, but it's certain purpose. And we're going to try to repurpose this in some ways. So we looked for pricing on it and we had an initial pricing of $40,530. That was for a 2024. A little bit under $41,000, which Brian had confirmed that was below the Sourcewell price. It was going to take some time to get that. And we checked to see if what they might have available otherwise. And Toth at literally the last minute, like this morning, indicated that they could get a 20, a brand-new 2022. And we would, at this price of $37,630. My guess would be this truck was sitting in a lot somewhere waiting for a computer chip. Oh, would be my guess, probably so. Probably so. It's got 15 miles on it. Yeah. You know, whatever they push out, the more deluxe models first, because they've got more profit in them, so they'll hold back on these if they were, you know, the odometer cluster might not have worked or something like that. That's just a guess, but.
So we get a better price and it's available, they'll have it tomorrow on the lot.
Yeah.
They'll have it and get this approved. Any questions?
Just real quick, we're buying three vehicles tonight. And I know it seems like a lot and what the heck's going on, buying three trucks, whoa. But as mentioned, every single one is in the budget. We had a plan to buy this year. It just so happens it all came together at the same time. So I don't want people thinking, well, aren't they in the money? But this was all planned to do, so.
And I can tip the cap to Mr. Powell, because, you know, we knew we were going to get them, you know, when, and, you know, everybody's really busy and he gave us the reminder, I don't want your head to swell on anything. No, he gave us a reminder that, you know, because of availability, that if we're going to do it, let's do it. And so that's what kind of triggered it, that each department, I reached out and said, hey, if you're getting one, let's do it now, and that's why it came back and they did.
Yeah, we talked about this in November, that's when we started talking, a bunch of talks and everything else. So we don't know about this. And it just, like you said, things happen, people are busy, and it just kind of slips and next thing you know, all the vehicles for this year are gone.
Yeah.
So I just, I'm quite excited.
A good heads up.
Appreciate having the availability, that's a huge thing right now.
All right, we'll wait the three on this. Any other questions or anything? All right, exciting one. The second reading of Resolution 23R-48. Resolution Imposing a Moratorium on Enforcement of Certain Provisions of the New Franklin Zoning Code pertaining to agricultural uses and declaring this emergency. And this got a little tweaking, are we going to go ahead?
No, I just want to say thanks for including the concerns I had. I know we've got a resident here that has a concern about chickens, but it sounds like she's got more concern about everything involved with the chickens. It's not just the chickens in general, it's how her neighbors taking care of them, it's the lack of taking care of them. And then there's some issues, it sounds like with cats and some of the other things. So it's more extensive than just yes or no on chickens. It sounds like a, I mean, you're more welcome to speak.
Pardon me?
You're more than welcome to speak on this as well.
Oh, okay.
This is kind of an informal part of the meeting, so you're welcome, it's committee.
Oh, my name is Bart Flavinsky, I live on Kepler Road. And I have a big problem with chickens and, okay. I've lived there 52 years. I've been through a lot with various neighbors and I never complained. Like I had one neighbor with like six dogs, beels, for 35 years. And all they did was bark. And I would scream at them a lot, but I didn't do anything else. But there's just been a lot of stuff, and these chickens, I don't know how many she's had. I counted like 10 yesterday. They were in my yard, her yard, they were everywhere. And they never shut up. And you can't go outside and sit, you can't work out there in peace. And she takes care of nothing. And she'll let them all out and then she takes off. Now I have no idea how long they're out there, but, you know, I'm not going to be worried about chickens after 52 years. And I'm going to probably sell my house within a short amount of time. And that would be a negative for anyone, wouldn't it, like my home? short amount of time, and that would be a negative for anyone, wouldn't it, like my home? It's not a farm. We have a farm down the street, and you can't complain about him because he is a farmer. But the chickens, no. I mean, it's a big deal.
So one of the things I just wanted to bring up is, the moratorium we're talking about for allowing chickens, if, if we're not putting moratorium on how animals are taken care of, there's still stuff that's enforceable in our current zoning code that speaks to proper care, being on other people's property, not keeping them retained in your property, there's still stuff that's.
They aren't gonna be taken care of, sir. I've, I've been there long enough till I know.
Wait, but have you, have you reached out to our zoning department and?
Yes.
And what, what has Barry said in regards to them in the yard?
Oh, he came to the meeting.
Okay.
And when I called about the trailer, there were two gentlemen that did go out, that was last year, that she had, you know, they were hooked with the hose to the steps, and electric wires all over the ground. They said that she didn't answer the door, so they couldn't go around the backyard to look. So there was nothing done there. And I don't understand that, that was not explained to me, to make me understand why it stayed there. It's now gone, but it was a mess, and I feel very sorry for the people on the other side of them, because they had no edges or anything, and they've put a lot of money in the last five years in their home, and they have to sit on this new porch they built and look at this mess. And then they were burning every night, anything and everything, you know, in the big ground. That is, that is wrong.
I think, um, at least the intention, and I'm definitely sensitive to your concerns, um, and a couple things go through my head in terms of options, alternatives that, that might be present, as Mr. Powell was mentioning, I, you know, I know there's, there's limitations on animals that are straying onto a person's property, our police department has, has enforced that in the past. Uh, it's been dogs, it's been cattle, uh, and it's been chickens. Uh, and that's really about the only ones that, that we've had, we don't have a lot of them. Uh, as far as the, the resolution that's in front of council today, um, the intention was not to expand, um, the, you know, harboring, housing, or raising chickens, it was to address, uh, concerns for existing, uh, folks who are, it, it, were already in the process of, of raising the chickens and initially.
Well, sir, there is a law now that for two, you have to have two acres.
Well, no, I, I'll get that, and so that was part of the problem, okay? That was one of the concerns that was raised, uh, and a resolution was introduced to, well, I guess as an adjunct, you may not know that, uh, council, uh, authorized a zoning diagnostic report to see where there's problems with the zoning code, and that area, this eight-hundred section that deals with agriculture is one of those problem areas. Uh, council then, uh, approved the engagement of a consultant to assist us, uh, in a revision of the zoning code, uh, and the initial meeting for that purpose was held last week with planning and zoning, so that process is beginning, uh, and there will be a, a hard look at the provisions in the, throughout the code, but definitely in the eight-hundred section and as relates to agriculture, and as relates to chickens, uh, and, uh, and you guys, you folks will all be invited to come in and have that input. So there'll be an opportunity, some of the concerns that you mentioned, and we wanna hear those, I'm sure, uh, and those things will be taken into consideration, I'm sure, when there's a, a revision of the code itself, but what this is about is saying, hey, listen, until then, we're gonna, we're gonna try to make sure that the enforcement process is consistent with what we've permitted.
She's already had it for two years.
Well, and I don't know about your specific situation, but I will then try to speak to the, to the amendments, the initial resolution, um, would, uh, there was a moratorium on enforcement of lot size, so that was the two acres, and we said, okay, we're not gonna enforce that for existing chicken rations.
So how can you?
Or bees. Well, I'm almost done, I'm almost done. But what we added, then it was brought to our attention that there were two other areas that we hadn't addressed, one is, uh, there was a limitations on what zoning districts you could do this in, and we didn't want to enforce that at this point either, and finally, there was a limitation on, uh, distance from buildings used for human habitation, uh, and some of the existing chicken ragers would, would have been in violation, so we added those two additional components, uh, and said, we're not going to enforce in those areas. Uh, any other areas, as Mr. Powell pointed out, that, you know, that, let's just call them nuisance areas, or the failure to properly care for.
Well, you, so you're saying in, with an acre, what she has, that she can have all the chickens she wants, they can do whatever they want?
Can't do whatever they want.
No, that's what they're doing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, she's not following any of the laws. Some of these laws are still saying attack, that apparently she's not abiding by the guidelines.
Well, she doesn't.
That, that's my point.
We, we're not.
Yeah. There, there's still existing laws that she can be basically enforced to, to abide by.
So what is their number of chickens?
There, there is no number of chickens.
There is no number.
No. But if they're in your yard, if they're, I mean, that's, that's not allowed to happen, if she's not taking care of them, that's not allowed to happen, that's still not allowed to happen.
There's cleanliness, uh, you know, there's, there's a number of stipulations that are still, this doesn't get rid of that, and it doesn't give her anything permanent, this is just a moratorium while we review.
It's just a pause it.
A pause on the lot size, and then it adds the other pieces. So I don't, I, I think your, I think your concerns can still be addressed, even after this passes.
Is she allowed to leave them run loose?
No.
No.
Never was.
Cause I always ran over one with my tractor.
Yeah, she never was, and this won't change that. If you, um, perhaps, once we have a break here, if you provide your address, we'll, we'll take a look, uh, and we'll have, I'll have zoning take another look, and we'll, and we'll see what's going on over there. Uh, and I'll talk to the police as well, and I'm gonna encourage you to do the same, stay in touch with us.
I dealt with it for over six months, I'd come home, my flower beds were all dug up, and I kept on calling Barry, and I worked with the mayor, and they had to give her their chickens. I didn't care that they had chickens, but I didn't wanna come to my home every day and they're in my yard. You know, we got like three quarters of an acre, and they got about three quarters of an acre, and they just, and, you know, then that caused so much bad blood, it's like, but I don't care about your chickens, I just care about them digging in my flower beds and being in my yard all the time. You never even give me any eggs. Oh, you could have like buttered me up with a couple, but it was, you know, so they never, they've been bad blood ever since, and that was a few years ago, it's like.
So what?
You know, it's like I wasn't asking much, I just, you know, so call Barry, call Barry, get with them now that we know, just get with them, they cannot just run wild.
So when do you, uh, make the new rule?
That'll be over the course of the next. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't wanna mislead you, it's, it's gonna be a lengthy process. Uh, we anticipate the timeline, uh, it'd probably take about twelve months before we get to the end of the code, and the eight-hundred section is towards the end of the code. Uh, you know, whether or not there'll be some, uh, you know, we can revisit that timeline, it's conceivable, I suppose if things become more urgent, we can move that more to the front of the pack.
But it's also a problem, like, you know, I'll be five years old in a couple months, I'm gonna wanna sell my home.
Right, I get it.
And, uh, nobody's gonna wanna buy with, you got three, twenty, thirty chickens running around.
How much, how much acreage does that neighbor have this raising of chickens?
One.
Well, it sounds like though, if I'm not, if I'm missing something, please tell me, I know you will. Um, but it sounds like she has adequate problems, that she could address it now.
Yeah, and then there's existing.
That she wouldn't have to wait for zoning, that's what you're wondering, do you have to wait for zoning?
Right, yeah, there's, there's existing rules on the book, it's not being amended with any of this, it's still enforceable.
She should have been there last year, wouldn't you doubt?
Right, and what, what you're telling me is that as long as you can come to Barry, then I think Paul's gonna step in.
Yeah, zoning amendment, yeah. You've come to this meeting is a good, was a good, this little, this little highlighter.
But you're gonna give Paul your name and address, and he's gonna get Barry to get in touch with you and see what can be done.
Cause Barry'll send, he'll send letters, I videotaped them in my yard, digging, I mean, they're right there digging, too.
We'll get them off to the scene, too.
I videotaped it and I just kept on calling Barry, I said, this, you know, I have.
Okay, Kate Jack.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming, thanks for sharing your opinion. I also, uh, reached out on Facebook when this guy talking, and I asked for people to just give me input, because it's gonna be a long-term discussion, and there were a number of people that sent a separate email, because they didn't wanna say it on Facebook, on social media publicly, so they sent a private email and said, look, here's, here's a couple concerns I have, this is some experiences I have. I have, my neighbor has turkeys, and for a while, they were just running loose, and they would, they would huddle up and the guy next, the guy between us is, uh, garage, and this guy worked nights, and I don't even know how loud turkeys are, I think, they, I mean, you just jump and then they all, they all gobble, and, um, yeah, so fortunately, we were able to talk to him and he, he got them wrestled in and has kept them on his property, but there are definite concerns that we definitely will address, so. Any other comments, questions?
I have a resident contact me as well, um, sort of the same concern, um, they have acreage, we're having their neighbors, their concern was same with just the birds at large, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, so I, I let him, you know, and Barry can, uh, let him know as well to, contact us, contact, uh, you know, police, and if same as a dog or anything else running loose in the yard, have to contain it, so there's other, other sides of it, but again, he wasn't against chickens, just in his yard.
Yeah, in general, that seems to be the overwhelming, uh, opinion of the community is that it's okay to have chickens, but there has to be some regulation, there has to be some, some, some constraint, and most people, the vast majority of people that have chickens don't have neighbors that have any problems, because they are following the rules, they are keeping them contained and that, so.
Well, actually, if they have under two acres, they're not following, if they have them, so that's my concern, that, nothing against it, but to just say, oh, we're just not gonna enforce that now, it's, I'll, I'll go down, just because I'm afraid what could happen now, now it's like, some people coming because they got a horse and, you know, or something, now it's just starting to be just not enforce the rules that are in, now if it changes them, that's fine, if there's a discussion that it changes, that's fine, I can't support this.
I can see your point, I appreciate it, I, I look at it to the point, when you read the rules and it says a subdivision, I've got a predetermined idea what a subdivision is, it's the houses that all look alike, there's a cul-de-sac, that type of, you know what I mean, that's, and a lot of people don't realize that majority of neighborhoods are, they've gotten to what they consider subdivision, so I think it's more of a, maybe a misinterpretation of the text, I don't think they purposely wrote the rules, I think it's just more of a, I don't picture myself, and that's, that's why I wouldn't support this.
Our code is confusing.
Is it just, my understanding is, is that moratorium is only on existing people though, but now, as a lot of people get situated, so people can't just, can't do it now.
Correct, if you don't have two acres, you can't get.
So it's just grandfathered in existing.
Just for, just for this time period while we, while we address the, the role of.
Well, I wanna thank the council for looking at this and listening to the residents, um, to Mr. Stock, uh, like they said, this moratorium is only for existing, and it's only for chickens and, and bees, so if somebody can't get a horse and, you know, say they.
Not on this one, but there could be, not on this one, I understand that, but there could be a lot of stuff comes from.
Yeah.
What just happened to you.
The, the code really.
I mean, I just have concern, I'm sure we're past line, but.
Yeah, the code really does need to be written, and there's a big difference between keeping chickens and responsibly keeping chickens.
I understand that, but.
So, but it is addressed in our code under the current things, generally accepted good agricultural practices, which it sounds like the neighbor is not, uh, solving, so, but thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I just wanna say, uh, this, this lady expressed what I expressed last meeting, uh, a perfect example of, there can be problems, and even if, if people are maintaining, as she said, they can be noisy, and they can, they can affect neighbors being able to use their property. Um, and, um, as Mr. Stock said, we, we have a zoning code in force, or in place, and people are breaking that rule, uh, whether they do it or not, it's still, they're breaking the, the law as such, uh, just like this lady said, you already have a rule, why isn't it being followed, why isn't it being enforced? Um, so I, you know, I know that it says here for existing and residents currently involved, we have no way of enforcing that, we have no way of knowing if something is new or has been there, um, I, I agree with Mr. Stock, I will not be in favor of this, I, I will, you know, I have, have not had my mind changed.
Well, my neighbor has, this is her second year of being illegal.
I understand.
And nothing's been done, and she just keeps adding and doing, there is no rule for her, I don't understand.
There, there are, there are rules, they're just not being enforced, and, and they can still be enforced after this.
The acres she's had in two years?
Yes. Any other comments?
Discussion?
So, I think most of us have our minds made up, this has been discussed, I'm, I feel okay with waiving the third reading?
Maybe change my mind.
Yeah, that's, but I, that's kinda the gist, I, we, okay, well, you're gonna give her two more weeks, or it doesn't, doesn't matter either way?
Doesn't matter either way, I, I think either way you wanna go.
And it would be a month, because we don't have a meeting, a closed meeting.
So you're, you're, this, just to get it done out, this is not guaranteeing anything, this is just saying, hey, we're gonna take a look at it, not enforce.
Correct.
Currently, uh, reception.
We're not saying, when we, when we reach a code, we may keep the two acre, the, you know, we, we still have that available to us.
And you're also saying that no one can bring in now.
Yes, you can't bring in, bring in chickens now.
Yeah.
And anybody that's, that's not following the law can, they can address them.
They can address the other parts of the law about cleanliness and staying on their own property, nuisance, the word nuisance, the nuisance word is in the existing eight-hundred, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Jim talked about nuisance, who's determining nuisance, and there's just.
Well, that will always be zoning code, then, yes. Yeah. All right, you guys ready to go? Then we'll, we'll ask to wave the third reading, committee.
Okay.
Anything else for, uh, community development? Community development at six forty-eight.
We'll call to order the regular city of New Franklin. Mm-hmm. Six fifty? Forty-eight, okay, everyone raise for you, stand for the fudge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Susan, I can hear you in the room, also?
I am, I am getting in today. Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Hargit? Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May third meeting.
Second.
You have a first and a second, Susan?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
And Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for April twenty-twenty-three, subject to audit.
Second.
Do you have a first and a second? I'm sorry, I almost said, I.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passed, and do we have any public comments for this meeting? If not, we'll move into our first reading, resolution number twenty-three R forty-one, Susan.
Sponsor Mayor Addison, a resolution authorizing the hiring of an additional full-time service department road maintenance worker, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
We talked about this during our Streets and Drainage Committee and we've had a good discussion about the need for this additional full-time worker, so I'm gonna ask, make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-one.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R forty-two.
Again, another Streets and Drainage Committee piece of legislation about a resolution authorizing Franklin to enter into agreement with GPD associates for the design. Did you read that?
Nope.
That's what I.
You like me to read it for you? Okay, sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with GPD associates for the design of the Grove Road Bridge project and declaring emergency.
Could've done better than that. Make a motion, again, we talked about this, I'll make a notion, a notion to adopt or to waive resolution for twenty-three R forty-two.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-two.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R forty-three.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing modifications to the twenty twenty-three annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency. Is it all right if we amend the ampersand? It's just in the title.
Yes.
So you want to approve it as amended?
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-three R forty-three as amended.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-three R forty-three as amended.
Second.
We have a first and a second?
Mr. Daniels?
Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R forty-four.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We will waive the three readings on twenty-three R forty-four.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
And Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-three R forty-four.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R forty-five.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing the return of funds advanced by the General Fund to the J Grant Fund, Fund Twenty-Sixty-Three, and the Bullproof Vest Grant Fund, and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We will waive the three readings on resolution twenty-three R forty-five.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-three R forty-five.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-three R twenty-four-six, sorry.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tashiva Business Solutions for the lease of copier equipment for the New Franklin Police Department and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-three R forty-six.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution twenty-three R forty-six.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R forty-seven.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Pope Duke DMC Incorporated for purchase of a twenty twenty-four GMC Sierra thirty-five hundred HD pickup truck for the service department and declaring an emergency.
This is, again, discussed in the Streets and Drainage Committee and make a motion to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-seven.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-seven.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number twenty-three R forty-eight.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Pope Duke DMC Incorporated for the purchase of a twenty twenty-four GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred HD pickup truck for the service department and declaring an emergency.
Again, the Streets and Drainage Committee resolution, make a motion to waive resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-eight.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And just to clarify, we're waiving the three readings, not the resolution itself.
Did I say we use that resolution? I got a lot of resolutions going to do. Okay, now I'm gonna make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash forty-eight.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Resolution passes. And next resolution is resolution twenty-three R forty-nine.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution awarding a bid to Carco Companies Incorporated for the city of New Franklin twenty twenty-three paving project and declaring an emergency.
Streets and Drainage Committee, I'm gonna make a motion to waive the three readings on the resolution twenty-three dash R dash forty-nine.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash forty-nine.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes. And now we have resolution number twenty-three R fifty.
Sponsor Mayor Adamson. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Pope Duke DMC Incorporated for purchase of a twenty twenty-two GMC Canyon pickup truck for the zoning department and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to Community Development. And I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings on resolution twenty-three R fifty.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm going to adopt resolution twenty-three R fifty.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-three R forty-eight.
Um, sponsor Mayor Adamson. As amended, a resolution imposing a moratorium on enforcement of certain provisions of the New Franklin zoning code pertaining to agricultural uses and declaring an emergency.
This was assigned to Community Development Committee and I'd like to move to waive the third reading on resolution twenty-three R thirty-eight as amended.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three R thirty-eight.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
As amended.
As amended.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
No.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
And Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five, two.
After a very good debate, discussion throughout the community, online, in this room, emails, a lot of good, a lot of good.
And I think that everybody feels differently about it.
Sure.
But I, I think that what we're voting on is just for that moratorium for right now, David.
Judy, I know exactly what you mean. You don't have to explain it to me.
I didn't want you to think that we, we thought that, because I agree with you.
I know exactly what you mean.
You don't like other animals.
I'm getting some chickens. No, I already have. I already have. Did I say that?
You did, you did. You did, you did. You said it, but I don't think you meant it the way it came out. We have no term reading, no pending legislation. Our next, our favorite, hi, Mr. Paul.
Time's up.
Are you up to it?
We'll see. Here we go. First of all, we're continuing to work on our emergency operations plan. We continue to meet. We met last week. We're meeting again next Friday. And we're tweaking the cybersecurity aspect of our plan. So this was taken a little back for time. But one of the things that we have moved forward on, and I say with a smile, but it's serious business, is it was brought up during those discussions. We may have talked about it here in council. We have no basement in this room, in this building. And, you know, God forbid that the serious weather would come, a tornado might come suddenly, and what do we do? And so we do have, we have signs posted now for tornado shelter and the restrooms would be the proper places. If the internal aspect of this building is sufficient to hold the number of peoples who might, people who might possibly be here. So I wanted to, our fire guys got those orders up. So we're working on that aspect. We have one matter that council needs to address. And as always, whenever there's any request for renewals of liquor permits or issuances of new permits, council has the option of requesting a hearing on that action with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. What we have before us today, and I sent out to council and I sent it to the police chief and also the captain, is an application for a C permit for Atkins Golf LLC at the Turkey Foot Lake Golf Links. And so this would be an additional license at that location. It is a C license that, right now, I guess they just strictly have beer, and this would permit the spritzers and the seltzers and those kind of things. Not hard liquor, but the next, that level up. And so he has that application for that permit. I have not heard any objection. The police had no objection. So we would need a motion to, a motion to decline the opportunity for a hearing on this with the liquor control. Make a motion to decline that hearing?
Second, we have a first and a second.
And Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
All right, we'll communicate that. Just further updates on the sewer project. It's moving along in that direction. As you know, the, we really have two potential projects that are on the books anyway. The one is the one that's been there forever, and that would be introducing a sewer line into New Franklin to come up from the Barberdine wastewater treatment plant up Vanderhoof to State Route 93, south down to Grace Church. And then also tie in the existing package plant, which is in the Zellway area of the city, and turn that into a pump station. That's about a $15 million project. Some accounting intends to make an application to Ohio Public Works for funding for that. We were fortunate to obtain a commitment of $3 million from the federal government towards that project. But that is really, it's still entirely dependent on the OPWC funding, which is a competitive process. A second opportunity arose, and that was the $4 million visitor center that ODNR is planning for the Portage Lake State Park. To get sewer and water to that facility, the expense was going to be in the range of $3 million. We made the application for federal appropriation money for that $3 million. We can get 80% of that, and it appears we'll get 2.4 million towards that project. That can't happen without the first one happening. The sewer is going to have to come to 93 before it can get to them. So we, I went down to, they have a mayor's day last week in Columbus. I went down, I was able to get a meeting with Lydia Maholic, who's the director of the Ohio Department of Development, and also several of her staff members, and to advocate their support for the OPWC application. During those conversations, it was, I learned that there may be other windows open up there for funding and perhaps even a separate funding track for the whole project. So I've talked back with Mike Feneh at Summit County Sewer, met with him Monday this week, and we're going to chase it down both tracks. And both of them will probably run together. The OPWC funding, the application deadline was going to be the end of June, but they've advised Mike that it'll probably be the end of July because they don't have the applications in place yet. I don't know if any of the other cities have heard that, but it looks like it'll be the end of July before that funding goes in, and then it takes a couple of months for them to sort those out. The Ohio Department of Development is hoping, it is, it appears they're going to get an additional funding of maybe in the range of $160 to $200 million out of the state budget. Because the state, even though this is the state operating budget, not the state capital budget, there's a lot of money there that leftover cares money and that's going to be allocated. So they anticipate getting that, and they anticipate opening up another round of funding. So we're going to be at the front door on that one to see if we can go in that direction with them. So we're knocking on the door. Speaking of knocking on doors, we, we learned through our development, the development team, as you know, there was some transition. Sean Joyce is now Director of Insight. He had previous experiences, Stan. He would have a pretty steady grant of funds from the state capital budget. And he has engaged a advocacy group that's called, known as the Credo Company. Brian Hurdle is the primary player in that group, who has, they've engaged them in the past to advocate for them on state funding. From a couple of different sources, we learned that there's a shot at some funding from the state operating budget. Maybe to the tune of a million dollars. And so if you want a million, yes, or a million and a half. So we've pitched and we've engaged Credo, a two-month contract, $5,000 a month. And they're assisting. We put the package together. They're meeting with the senators. We are reasonably optimistic we got a shot at some money. The package that we put together, we had like virtually no time to do it because the House had already approved their budget. The Senate actually today or tomorrow will approve their version of the budget. And then the, it goes back to the governor, and then the two houses rainbow, and they're required to have a budget in place by the end of June. And unlike the federal government, I'd advise they do that. So that's not a critical comment, that's just a fact. So we'll know, that's why we did a two-month contract with them. The package that we put together, we focused on the service department because we're going to add additional employee, we're looking at extra vehicles. One of the things we talked about in the budget process was the need for a new salt truck, dump truck, that we, absent any other funding source, we use general funding, general fund money for that. So we got estimates on those vehicles, and you know we're trying to get this bucket truck too. The vehicles came out to about $350,000. And then we asked for money for operational support, not just for a year, but to sustain that for three more years, and we rounded it off to 1.5 million dollars. And so that one is being pursued. And we will know something on that one pretty close to by the time we're having a meeting. So just want to keep you advised, but we're out there chasing dollars. The Sisler Pavilion is going up. That's beautiful thing. And the frame and all will be done probably through the weekend, and then they come in and do the electrical, and then they do the concrete. So there's a good chance if weather holds up that that, it'll be completed by June 1st. So every, you know, Parks Committee is excited about that, baseball is as well, and that's just one more thing that we've talked about for a long, long time. So it's nice seeing that happen. The Tudor Seawall is substantially in, and a whole lot of other improvements to the ground's out there. So now we've got to sort through all the bills and, you know, it's when you get that federal and state money, it's, you know, it creates additional accounting responsibilities, but we're up to the task collectively. We're getting it done. The inclusive playground we're working on, we had, we had three different vendors come out. We got pricing from the first one. As you guys all know, right now, those playgrounds are really expensive. Not just expensive, but really, really expensive. I got a brand-new admiration every time I drive by a playground. I'm serious. For what you might consider a sort of a modest but inclusive playground equipment was in the range of $200,000. We were advised if you wanted to have a fully accessible handicap playground, you're in the million-dollar range. So we're getting that pricing. We got, the other two vendors haven't given their pricing, and we're moving down the tracks on that and keep you posted. Let's see, almost done, sale into summer. We got Memorial Day weekend coming up. That is the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend. We have over 40 vendors lined up. We got food trucks, we got music, we got kids' games, all on the late front. So we hope you come out and join us out there at the Tudor House for that event. That's going to be Sunday of Memorial Day weekend from noon to 5:00. And then everybody's favorite, the parade, which is beautiful. And this year, we're going to be honoring Korean War veterans, who we have not in the past. Then we actually have, we'll be announcing the grand marshal here pretty soon. We have a Korean War veteran who lives in New Franklin. That will, we'll honor him, but he'll really be, you know, doesn't need for all those who served here in Korean War and the families of those folks as well. All right. The last thing I wanted to mention was, we've talked about, it was discussed at one of the previous meetings, that, well, first of all, this is the election cycle for New Franklin. And in alternating two-year shifts, we elect all three council at large, and then two years later, all four ward seats. So this November, all four ward seats are up. We've had some announcements when that was discussed, that three of the four seats incumbents don't intend to run again. That's wards two, three, and four. And so we're going to have some new faces there. And there's some competition, which Mr. Cott's invited and encouraged in Ward 1. The reason I mention it again is two things. First of all, if you have an interest, the petitions have to be filed by June 14th. That's the filing deadline, June 14th at 4:00 PM. And as some of the people have mentioned, that doesn't mean 4:00. And then the second, we had some questions that come up that I didn't know the answer to along the way. A couple of people who have been passing petitions as to whether or not those petitions, whether the signatures, it's a minimum of 50 and a maximum of 150, whether or not they have to be from residents of the ward that you're running against. So we looked at the, I was now at the Board of Elections today. Our charter doesn't specify that. By the way, we'll be, next January, we'll be appointing a charter commission because that's our year to do a charter review. And this may be one of the things that we're going to take a look at. The charter itself says that a petition requiring signatures, and this is the pertinent part. It's in section 9.04 of our charter. A petition requiring signatures of registered electors, not less than 50 nor more than 150 for the office of ward council member. It doesn't say registered electors who reside in the ward. So it's, it's either it's ambiguous or else it's not. It's clearly, it could be any registered voter. Anywhere in the state of Iowa. Well, yeah, well, they have the registered electors here in New Franklin. So I talked with the Board of Elections, and we had our auditor to look at it, and we've been referred to, and I've been told to qualify this as, I am not giving you a legal opinion at this point, quite frankly. And nor have we given you an official position in the city because it really doesn't come down to the city's position. When those petitions are turned in, it's up to the Board of Elections to certify that, determine whether or not the signatures are sufficient. And they referred me today to, after, they didn't know I had talked to them, but they called me about two hours later. Ohio Revised Code, Section 3513.251, which is nomination for officers of municipal corporations. And at the very end of that, it talks about nominating petitions of nonpartisan candidates for elections as officers of a municipal corporation with a population of 5,000 or more shall be signed by not less than 50 qualified voters, qualified electors of the municipal corporation or ward thereof in the case of the nominating petition of a candidate for election as a council person for such ward. So that's a lot of wordiness. I hope I haven't worn you out, but maybe you knew it, maybe you didn't. But the stat, the Revised Code requires that those signatures come from residents of the ward that you're running in. I've won seven elections. I've never went, I've never gone outside of the ward for a signature. It is to be safe. Now, a couple of people asked me, and what I told them was... You go outside your ward for signatures? I mean, I told them that, you know, that to be cautious, I suggested to them that they stay inside the ward. And now this is what we're told from the Board of Elections, so just want to give everybody a heads up on that. All right, that's all I got. I'd like to say something too. I'm not sure if people realize how hard our, maybe it works for us. I mean, just trying to, you know, get us money for projects and stuff. I think people might take that for granted, I don't know, but I just, just amazingly, sitting up here for these many years and not much money he's brought into this city, are just going out there and getting it and working hard for us. And I feel fortunate to be a resident in here, that work from here does.
I agree, David.
You're her. All means to go. It's a team effort. But you're out there, you're working hard and getting that money.
We appreciate that you do, Paul. Jack, do you have anything on the...
On grants and planning? I'll try to be brief. Issue of the last couple of weeks has been the results of the survey and how they're going to be published. Something that we thought was really important was that when the result of a question is given, that the entire question is explained as it was on the survey. That we found when some paraphrasing was done, it changed the meaning of the answers. Not intentionally, it just seemed to change the way it sounded. So Mark's done quite a bit of work on, it's going to take some copying and pasting, which is harder than you think because the Tableau software that did the compiling and display of the data had some restrictions. So him and volunteer Dusty Smith did quite a bit of work to get this put together. We're pretty sure the way it's going to work is there will be one question on each page incorrect, jumped in and corrected the wrong. One question will be answered on each page with some graphs. If there's an associated map that had something to do with that question, it will be on that page along with the entire question as it was asked on the survey. So you'll be able to look at one question, one page, and have all the information in front of you. I think it was very good. Anything else you want to add regarding...
No, I didn't have that snag of how we were going to get the results we needed out of Tableau, which is a licensed software package that the rest of us don't have access to, and only Dusty did. And so we got it to a point now where we can get the results we want, and we're, maybe a week and a half before having the final report for...
That's all I need.
Thank you. Susan, anything new in finance?
Just that we are, we, the deadline for our gap is, they have coming in on the 31st of May to the state. So we are finishing up that, having meetings with them to go over that information so that someone works. And we are, as the mayor said, working on a lot of other projects in the meantime. So that's pretty much where we are right now. As I told you last time, the auditors have started their single audit. And as soon as our financial report is completed and filed with the state, then they will start going through that as well. And that's about it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any new business?
I have some. So I want to announce that due to resident issues or that residents change, that I intend to resign six months earlier than I anticipated to finish. Wasn't really planned, but it happened. So we're, I will no longer be eligible to be on council. So look forward to, I think it's 45 days to replace, to appoint. And so it's a good start with how I got started, with this appointment, so. But anyhow, just had to make that. Well, I don't know if I was the best councilman, but I'm probably the most tattooed.
You're only in history, in history, possibly.
Oh, I'd like to say thank you. I mean, you've been great to work with. You've always carried yourself very professionally. You just have a great outlook on everything.
Really nice of you to do one.
I second that. You'll be missed, you'll be welcomed back here to give advice.
Our vote is still here, but we're not moving forward.
I also suggest that where you move, you run for office there because you're definitely a contributor.
I may attend a few meetings and so.
So as Andy mentioned, 45 days from when he officially resigns, and he doesn't have to officially resign until he moves. So whenever he chooses to make that official. We'll be making announcements and posting the process to apply for his position when the time is right. I'd like for anybody that lives on Ward 4 to encourage you to apply. This, if you've ever thought about getting involved in the city and being on council, this would be a great opportunity for someone to do that because it's a five-month commitment. So you don't have to go out and get signatures and campaign, just fill out the application and come in for an interview process. But it gives, it gives somebody that's not really sure whether they want to put a, you know, full commitment into it, give it a taste, give it a try, you know, trial run sort of thing. And then in a couple of years, if you're interested in running, you kind of know what's going on. You kind of have that thought process or, you know, you have a little experience with it. So I encourage you, if you have any thoughts of being on council or getting more involved in the city, it's just a five-month commitment because the election will be in November, and whoever wins the election then would then take over January 1st.
But they're not, if they get appointed, they can still run for that seat.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but we're running into time frames because you're not having a vicious, heavy, much, gym, team. So that'll make that happen.
And that still gives them time if they want to, they would already gotten their petitions. Actually, give them plenty of time.
Yeah. So I just, you know, I just want people to think, hey, I could probably do this for five months. So give it a shot.
The biggest problem, well, I don't know, the biggest problem, but a big problem that I've seen out here for many, many years, the lack of people interested in running. So run, you know, as Jim said when he announced that he was running, run against it, you know? And get involved. It's, losing an election is not a tragedy. I've done it a couple of times, and it's not a tragedy. So just a learning experience, and I think it's a good, healthy, healthy debate for our city, as we saw with the chickens. You know, it's good when we have people that disagree that have conversations in rooms. That's what we're supposed to do. Well, I just wanted to echo and make clear to folks, if you're watching or whatever, to kind of summarize what's been said. The seat will come open at the point in time Mr. Fetterman resigns. The charter requires you to live in the ward where you serve. So when he moves, that's the triggering event, that he can no longer be authorized. And, you know, we hope and trust that his resignation will, you know, overlap with that date. Council then will have 45 days, and as Mr. Cott's mentioned, we'll get out on the website, application forms. We'll announce this on the website as well. And could actually could begin, given the fact that your intention, we could actually begin accepting those applications or at least getting them out there after today. The worst thing, well, actually, maybe the best thing that could happen is we get applications and somehow circumstances change and you decide to stay, well, fine. But otherwise, then council will have those 45 days, which is probably going to be sometime into late July or sooner. But to have some interviews of the people and then to make a selection. And that person, as has been said, that person will serve the balance of the term. And so if you want to run for the seat, you're going to have to get your petitions filed by the 14th. You can still apply to serve the balance of the term, but just being appointed to serve the balance of the term doesn't put you on the ballot. So I know you've said, and I just wanted to say it one more time so everybody can hear it. And then I want to say about Mr. Fetterman, he's got a lot of tattoos, that's all I got. No, I'll tell you what. I think that, and I think, and I feel comfortable saying this is common for the people that are sitting at that, up there right now, that maybe one of the most important qualities is the willingness to listen to both sides and make a decision and occasionally change your mind. And that's what I've seen in Mr. Fetterman, that, you know, you can, some things you feel strongly about and you probably ought to hold your ground. But a lot of these things, there's, boy, there's two sides to it. And what I've seen with Mr. Fetterman is he listens to both sides. He doesn't come in with a predetermined notion, and he's been open-minded on that. And I've seen him change his mind on things, but only after a good, healthy discussion. So, well, that's a quality we like, that's a quality, a step away as a mayor, as somebody who lives here, that's what we want. That's what we want, in all of these seats, including these two. You know, the willingness to listen and be open and be willing to change your mind if, you know, again, you're probably right about that. I don't know the direction, so I've said enough, but we're going to miss you here, that's for sure.
Well, and I would say too, that he's been a real advocate for his ward.
That's for sure.
Since you know that, you know, New Franklin, most people think it, oh, it's just Manchester, and it's not, you know? And he's been an advocate for his ward.
He actually epitomizes everything you want in a council person because he really cares about the community. And you all do, you're showing that by being here tonight over chickens. But I'm saying to you, quite honestly, and he cares, and I would say that's the nicest thing anyone could say.
All right, that's enough. Thank you, he's not moving now.
I've got a few things here.
He's not moving, he's wrong.
So I've got three things to bring up, and actually, the first one, if you remember back, I think it might have been 2021, you guys had a recognition of a, it might have been Masonist. have been Mason Miss, maybe, who jumped into a river to try to save a guy that was in a car wreck and stuff. We had kind of a similar situation that happened, I kind of got wind of it over the weekend. This was a guy that was playing golf, went over to another establishment, collapsed. One of the employees jumped in, actually performed CPR, brought this person back, and, you know, essentially, until EMS got there. I could get the information of the employee's name and stuff, I just wondered if we could do some sort of recognition of this person?
Yeah, I spoke with the establishment owner this morning about that, and he's looking into whether or not any of the people involved wanted to be identified. He's also looking into...
CPR classes?
Yeah, and maybe you're going to talk about that.
No, I wasn't, but, yeah.
No, he's, I'm trying to put together some CPR classes, because that was a lifesaver.
One of the other things I want to bring up is, we've got two New Franklin residents, Lane Adkins and Clayton Kovacs. These are high school-aged youths, they live in New Franklin, and they're competing in the Scholastic Clay Target Program. They've actually won their regional area, and it sounds like the national people are there, these guys are going to be potential national contenders, so they may be representing New Franklin on a national platform. And then the last thing is, I had a lady reach out to me earlier today, her name's Tara Seaman. She is actually in the quarterfinals for the Super Mom Award, and this is part of the Children's Miracle Network. I'm not sure if you remember them or not, Mayor, but it sounds like July of two thousand nineteen, her son had a bone nerve transplant, and he had actually sworn him in to be an officer for the day. So I just ask people, I posted this on the page that I have, if you guys could just go vote for it, it'd be great. I mean, she's, right now, she's fifth in the nation for this award. It'd be really great if we could see this go home.
Hey, where do you go to vote?
There's a link, and actually, can we get Katie to maybe push that?
Sure.
Perfect, I'll forward that to her.
Great. I just have something real quick. When we were doing pickleball debate, which was another good, big, healthy debate that we had here, one of the things that came up was the discussion about young and old combining, and the fact that it was an opportunity for more of the elderly community, I don't know if that's the right word to use here, because I'm going to call somebody by name, and youth, teenagers. And I have a perfect example of it. So my fiance's youngest son is twenty, and, you know, we've been going up there and planning, we didn't know how to play pickleball before, I don't know that we know now, but we're getting there, we've made some progress, and I have to say, it's fun. And, you know, in forty-five minutes or so, your heart gets going, but you don't, it's very low impact, you know, unless you really do a stupid dive for a ball or something, but it's great. So we've been doing it. Well, come to find out, her son, who's at OU, has been playing a ton of pickleball at OU, and he heard about Mr. Robert Keith being, you know, world-famous pickleball champion, and he asked, he said, "Could you hook me up so that I could get a lesson with this guy?" So...
Bob's like, "Yeah."
Yeah, I don't know if I'm supposed to call you elderly or not, but you're certainly a lot older than this kid is, I'll tell you that.
The word is mature.
Mature. Thank you. So that concept of young and old coming together in our community, it set children down my spine. It was, it's good stuff, and I just wanted to make sure that that's it. That's beautiful. I will tell you that the layout for that facility was designed to permit the addition of, an additional four pickleball courts. So we're going to monitor play, and, you know, we're still working on getting this one paid off, but, you know, grant funding is always another option, because I'm told that they're being well-used. Yeah, that's beautiful. Beautiful. That's all.
Do we have any public questions or issues that we raised at the meeting?
Yes, ma'am. I have to do my name, right? Yes, if they can answer. Creamed and bold, four twenty-three, Ada Row. Mayor Adams, I know you're really super good at planning grants, but have you looked in the grants for inclusion playgrounds?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're chasing them.
Okay, and contact with some EDL?
I'm not the person who's, we have a grant person, and Katie's on that, but we're tuned into that, but give me the information, and we'll make sure that's part of the group that we go after.
I mean, they just, I know they're green-funded, too, and like, you know, state-funded, so they might have some leads on some grants that you could get for the inclusion playgrounds. And then I have a question, if there's a seat that's not filled, what happens?
You mean, if council doesn't fill that seat?
Yes.
Then it falls to the mayor to fill the seat.
Oh, thank you.
But not now. I think no country...
Oh, thank you.
That's what the charter provides.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Amy Wilson, four thirty-two Rollins. We were actually on the same wavelength, so one of our daughters has a lab that we need, and is in a wheelchair for long distances and stuff. I know that things... Sorry.
All right, take your time.
Are more expensive. I tell you why, when those kids are able to do something, if they see someone else do, it's worth it. If you need help, I'm so sorry, not me, just them. If you need help with getting in contact with people like Summit ED or even the Rotary, I'd be happy to help link people up.
All right, Lou will take you up on that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, having some community members involved in that grant process might help the grant process.
It couldn't hurt at all.
Yeah.
Just add on, she's not even thinking of something, we could even do a community fundraiser, too. That might be something that everybody would be happy to get behind on.
That's a good idea, Paul.
In the back corner, you did.
Yeah, my name is Greg Wolf. I live at thirteen forty-two McTweed Lighting in Wardford, and I do have signatures, I had every intention on running for Andrew's seat, I talked to him, didn't know the two of us, and I, I would love if anybody's in Wardford and said, "I'm pro-chicken," so... I'm here, I have fifty-one, but I'm going to get up to seventy-five to make sure I'm there, so...
Happy, happy, as I can stick around.
Thank you, so that's why I just wanted to let everybody know, I have my things here, I want to just be able, I've always had a passion for local politics. In fact, in twenty eighteen, I actually went through that application process, when Gus and she go office was there, and I scheduled it, and it allowed me to come, and it was a specific interview day, had to decline, but it's like, it was great for the city that Andrew was there, so, love the intent and following his footsteps, and he's been very helpful. I called him the first day, as I did with Mr. Cott's, and really just wanted to learn, I've been attending the meetings, and looking forward if I'm so lucky, so, thank you.
Also, you can go, like, before you turn them in, like, go to the Board of Elections, and you can check, make sure, because some people are like, "Yeah, I'm registered to vote," and they might not be, you know, so you can check, you can pre-check those before you actually, because once you hand them to them, it's okay. And I mean, you could just have a date wrong, and it's good to check, like, all your dates, you know, just everything, just go, because I've done it so many times, but at first, you're just like, freaking out about it, because they could throw it out, but you can go to the Board of Elections and check all of your signatures and all your people just before you turn it in, just to make sure that you're...
They're very helpful.
Yeah, they'll help you out.
Sometimes your wife has to get your signatures twice because you forgot to sign the form.
In one, a couple days.
Yeah.
Mark Sennack at Grove Road, since Mr. Wolf stood up and said that he's liking signatures and just finding out and putting in petitions to run for the council seat. I have also been out in my ward, knocking doors, talking to people, collecting signatures. Never intended to be a politician, but I think it's important that people who are engaged in the community are involved in setting council. I've been coming to the meetings for the last eight to ten years, and I'm going to toss my hat and earn as well, and will also fill in an application for Andrew's seat at his birthday.
Oh, exactly, and move for that.
That's not the example we set, bar high.
Yes.
They, they, yeah. I annoyed them so much, they all said, "You..."
Well, that's...
Is anyone else, any comments, questions? Siri, did you have something you wanted to say? No? Paul, do we have need for an executive session?
Yes, we do. We need an executive session to discuss potential imminent legal action with our attorney, who's come here to join us, and also to discuss appointment of a public official.
And for those of you running that don't know, names aren't normally this long. So we need that motion.
Yeah, we need a motion to...
We'll call that in here.
We need a motion to an executive session for, would you give your call?
Yes, that would be for, to discuss appointment of a public official and discuss imminent legal action with our attorney.
We have the first one, I can...
Who was, who made the most of the card?
I did. I hung both of them.
All right. Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Harvick?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Federman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Sutt?
Yes. No decisions will be made during this executive session, but...